Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of May the 23rd, 2023. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Item number three, if we'd all rise if able and join me as I lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item four, public comments for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have any speakers in Zoom? Okay, we will move on to item five, announcements and presentations. We have a few, a couple tonight. First, on June 1st, 2023 at 8:30 AM, the City of San Bruno will raise the progress pride flag in celebration of Pride Month. Members of the public are welcome to join in observance as the ceremonial flag is raised. This will be at the front of City Hall. You can be accessed through Linden if there's any concerns as far as steps or obviously El Camino. There will be somebody that I will issue the proclamation and it will be presented. And this will be our first time doing that, so I want to thank staff for making that happen. And also, as me serving on the Transportation Authority, it'll be the first time that the Transportation Authority for the county will be acknowledging it as well through a resolution. So with that, we look forward to seeing folks. Item B, the San Bruno Lions Club will hold the 81st Annual Posy Parade on Sunday, June 4th, 2023. The Floral Parade for Children will start at 11:00 AM on Linden Avenue near the San Bruno City Hall and will travel south to Crystal Springs Road and up Crystal Springs Road to the San Bruno City Park. If you're in the area, please join us. Wave as the parade moves along and show your support of the San Bruno community. And we want to thank the Lions for all of their work and for all of those and the little ones that will be enjoying that day. Item C, the 82nd Annual Memorial Day Observance is scheduled for May 29th, 2023 at 11:00 AM at the Golden Gate National Cemetery, which is located at 1300 Sneeath Lane Honorary Veterans' Way. My understanding is there's going to be a lunch after that and a host lunch at the American Legion Hall. And there will be parking available provided by Artichoke Joe's and the lot for those that may have difficulty finding a parking spot. Next, we will move on to item D, Issue Proclamation declaring May 21st to the 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week. And we will, I will be issuing this and presenting it over to our Public Works Director, Director Lee. And again, it is recognizing May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week, connecting the world through public works. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and service and that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of San Bruno. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportational, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of San Bruno to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their prospective communities. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved, Irico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby designate the week of May 21st to the 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week. And I will present this to Director Lee. And then Director, if you'd say a few things, but also on behalf of the council and myself, if you would take back to staff for all they do, right? And it happens during the business day, but it happens on the weekends. It happens during storms. It happens during emergencies that arise in our community. So I, with me and the council, I want you to personally please, on my behalf, tell the team that we thank them.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a little time today to recognize Public Works Week. Public Works is a thread that connects us all, no matter where we live in the world. Every public works professional strives to improve the quality of life for the community that they serve, leading to healthier and happier communities. The theme this year is connecting the world through public works. This theme highlights the way public works professionals connect us physically, through infrastructure and inspirationally through the services to their communities, whether as first responders or daily workers carrying out their duties with pride. Public Works connectors help keep communities strong by providing an infrastructure of services in transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management and first response, solid waste and right-of-way management. They're what make our communities great. We had our Public Works Week luncheon today where we handed out service award, but I'm always amazed at all the work that the men and women in our profession do. They really do take pride in their work and it's often seldom not seen until something happens. So in honor of this week, if you see anyone in lime green, just thank them for their service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Lee. Very much appreciate it. Now we will move on to item E, presentation and update on code enforcement activities. And we'll turn it over to our Police Chief, Ryan Johansson, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am Ryan Johansson, your Police Chief here in San Bruno. If you can give me just a moment, I will share my screen and pull up the presentation. Okay, looks like we're good. Once again, thank you so much for allowing me to make this presentation. I am Ryan Johansson, the Chief of Police. I am the bobbing head that will be giving this presentation, as is so often the case, but the two people who are really responsible for the information I'm going to share with you this evening are kind enough to be in the audience. I've got Code Enforcement Officers Robert Harrison and Elizabeth Ruiz, who I would just like to recognize because all of what I'm about to present to you really is not my hard work, but is theirs. And I'm very, very proud of the work they've done and the time that they've been in their roles. So with that, we'll cut right into it. Our agenda this evening is I will give a little bit of a background on code enforcement, specifically its migration to the Police Department a couple of years back, talk a little bit about the roles and responsibilities of our code enforcement officers, a little about their approach to complaints and how that has shifted a bit with what I think are some positive results. I will share some of those positive outcomes and results as well. I will talk a little bit about the complexities of their undertaking and try to touch upon some of the challenges that they continue to face today, talk a bit about their caseload and where that's gone, and then of course, give some examples of specific cases as well, all in an effort to sort of provide you with probably a long overdue update as to what's going on with code enforcement since its migration to the Police Department. So as a reminder here with our background, code enforcement moved from CED to the Police Department not long ago at all. And in doing so, they inherited a backlog of literally thousands of open code enforcement cases. Many of those cases were stale and had been around for a very long time. Some of them were more fresh and new, but nonetheless, we're talking about walking into the position in Robert's case with literally thousands of cases to try to clear out, let alone the fact that the new cases are continuing to come in every day. So he walked into quite an undertaking. It also included a reduction from what had been three code enforcement officers to just two. In fact, there was only one code enforcement officer at the PD until February of 2022. So for about the first two years of the position, we were seeking a second person to fill the vacated position there. Really, we focused on sort of training and redesigning our strategy and approach to code enforcement complaints. Chief among that was to increase our responsiveness and to take a more hands-on approach to working directly with property owners in an effort to gain compliance on code enforcement violations. The idea being that rather than sending out a bunch of letters and hoping for compliance, our thought process was that most of our residents want to be in compliance and it's really a matter of working with them to educate them about the codes, the requirements, and then to give them access to the means to become compliant. And we'll talk a little bit later about what results that has produced, but it seems to have been a proper direction for us to take. The goals were to reduce the backlog of pending cases, if not eliminate them altogether, and also to keep up with the existing and new compliance issues as they came in. The roles and responsibilities of code enforcement officers are often misunderstood. At a high level, they're basically responsible for the quality of life and nuisance concerns that a city deals with on a day-to-day basis. The distinction here is that nearly everything a code enforcement officer deals with, in contrast to say, a police officer, are private property violations, violations of the code that are occurring on property that is not owned by the city or controlled by public entities. These will often include complaints of accumulations of trash or debris, general blight, graffiti complaints, which can be somewhat rampant from time to time, deteriorated and dilapidated properties, and even inoperable vehicles that are again on private property, are all things that fall under the purview of code enforcement. They also serve as the enforcement arm for many other departments who need enforcement activities in order to back up their own efforts. This includes construction without permits, planning and zoning violations, business compliance or permit violations, unpermitted encroachments, and even stormwater violations. And when I say they serve as the enforcement arm, this means that the individuals in those particular disciplines are really the subject matter experts who have to ascertain whether or not there's a violation and notify us of what the corrective action is. However, it is not their role to go out into the community and to have contact with the violator and potentially take enforcement action if needed. And so the code enforcement officers serve in that role for the other departments in addition to taking care of their own caseloads. It requires a lot of coordination with outside agencies as well, not only within the city, but with BART, Caltrans, Caltrain, Samtrans, you name it. There are all kinds of other entities that have control over various portions of or areas within our city and code enforcement has to work with them regularly. I touched on this at the beginning, but really what we have changed the most, I think, is our approach to complaints. Initially, when we receive a complaint, the code enforcement officers have to go out to verify that the condition exists as described. This might sound a little bit odd, but the reality is they get dozens and dozens of complaints that actually don't rise to the level of being code violations. They can often involve neighbor disputes where they're attempting to use code enforcement to sort of fight out their battles between each other. And so their first step is to actually get out into the field and confirm, is the violation there? Does it exist? Does it violate the San Bruno Municipal Code? And are there additional violations, both inside and potentially outside of code enforcement that need to be addressed while we're taking care of the initial complaint? From there, they're always going to attempt to contact the owner or the person who is in control of the particular premises where the violation is occurring. They'll attempt to educate them about the violation. As I said at the beginning, in many cases, the resident may just be ignorant as to the law. There are some somewhat obscure laws that until we take the time to educate the public about the existence of them, they may not even be aware they're in violation. They will then engage in a series of communications and follow-up to ensure that the ball doesn't get dropped, resulting in another massive caseload of pending or old stale cases. Again, the entire emphasis here is to work towards compliance with every step that code enforcement is taking. And I'll talk a little bit about why that's so essential in a couple of slides. And then of course, they're providing access to resources for residents who do not have the resources, business owners who may not have the resources to correct the problems. So some of the positive outcomes as I see them with the migration to the Police Department. First of all, we have 100% accurate tracking because we've moved all the code enforcement complaints and their tracking into our Police Department CAD or computer aided dispatch system. This means that every single complaint is immediately logged, every single step taken in an attempt to resolve that complaint is categorized and logged. And at any point in time, we can go back and we can verify and look at what we've done, or in some cases, not done, on a given complaint in order to try and resolve it. There have been 2,320 such calls for service since April of 2021 when we migrated over to this system. To give you an idea of the workload, I mean, that's pretty tremendous and substantial for two code enforcement officers to undertake. And currently with that caseload, they're experiencing more than a 97% voluntary compliance rate, which tells us that in the vast majority of cases, once we engage with the resident or the business owner, we attempt to gain compliance, we work with them through the process, getting them resources, they will comply. Of course, there's been a massive increase in our responsiveness and our follow-up and our collaboration with other city departments as well, which is a big part of the success. There's been a huge reduction in those active pending cases. There were about 2,200 of those when it transitioned to the Police Department. There's approximately 100 active cases for code enforcement now. 57 of those are inoperable vehicle complaints. And I only make that distinction because inoperable vehicle complaints tend to be sort of continuously rolling in and often quite difficult to resolve. And so there will always sort of be this carried balance of inoperable vehicle complaints to deal with. Some of the positive outcomes we've seen so far are often not easy for the community to see. This is an example on the 100 block of San Bruno Avenue West. There were over 15 years of compliance issues. This was a stagnant case for which there was no traction being gained. The code enforcement officers engaged in a great deal of this outreach and coordination, communication, follow-up, as I've discussed, and it resulted in a demolition of the structure with permits, which is very important, and it is currently pending development. So of course, when we look at the after picture on the right here, we see an empty lot where we of course would like to see something far more presentable. But if you take it in the context of what existed before and on which we had gained no traction over almost a 15-year period, it's obviously a vast improvement aesthetically now, but also because there's the potential for development there. Some of the complexities and challenges that we continue to face despite the movement to the Police Department. They have a lot of complex and overlapping cases. Many of these cases are not straightforward. They may show up to a residence where the initial complaint is for say, failure to properly trim the shrubbage around the house and find out they've got unpermitted construction. They might have animal complaints. They might have all kinds of inoperable vehicles and other issues to deal with. And that often requires them to liaise and work with other city departments who quite frankly are exceedingly busy dealing with their own existing workload. And so oftentimes, this can create protracted resolution times, but nonetheless, they're working very hard on even those complex cases. They also run into jurisdictional challenges, as certainly the council is no stranger to. Oftentimes, we have an issue we want to fix, but it's not our property under control to fix it, in which case we have to work with other entities to attempt to get their compliance. They're also often dependent upon the expertise requirements from other city departments and officials. I mentioned this a bit earlier, but many times to conduct the enforcement, we need that expert foundation to be set, that the violation is in fact real and qualifies to go do the enforcement that's being asked. Oftentimes, there are extensive timelines for compliance because of these issues. It's also really important, I think, to note that ultimately enforcement is just a tool for compliance. And this is often very difficult to reconcile, but the fact of the matter is that it is nearly impossible to force compliance when it comes to private property violations like those that the code enforcement officers are dealing with. So the use of enforcement mechanisms like citations and inspection warrants is all designed to continue pushing them to voluntary compliance. At the end of the day, we can't go in and fix a house. The resident is going to be required to fix it and to assume the costs of fixing it in almost all cases with some exceptions. And so just very much worth noting that enforcement is not the solution. It's a mechanism towards the solution. The solution is compliance. We do have some other tools such as collections and property liens that can continue to force beyond enforcement, meaning issuing of citations, but those are in a very small percentage of cases. This slide is just to represent what I already covered, but this is specific to the SB Responds app where many of the code enforcement violations do come in. You can see there's a 98.4% completed rate of the SB Responds complaints that come in. I really commend the work of the code enforcement officers in getting to that. The way SB Responds works is they may very frequently walk in on a Tuesday morning to 140 SB Responds complaints. And it could just be that a member of the public decided to go out and send a message for every single inoperable vehicle in their neighborhood. And ultimately, those all have to be intake, intaked and worked and categorized and dealt with. And so them keeping up at a 98.4% rate is, I think, very applaudable. They also receive a number of concerns from other mechanisms. So SB Responds is the biggest, but they get a lot via phone, email and in-person. Again, more than 2,300 in the last two years. They get, they have about 102 requests via the graffiti hotline alone in the last 12 months. So this is just a resident calling in and saying there's graffiti at this location. They take each and every one of those seriously, go out, determine if it is a workable criminal case, if we can identify the perpetrator from the graffiti. If not, we bring out our third-party partner and they immediately paint over it, match the paint, try to clean up the look in the community. Unresolved SB Responds requests are reduced from 375 to 70 over the last 18 months. So I think another indication that they're working very, very hard. Some issues can be resolved in a week. Others can take months and months and months. I will say that there's a sort of a double-edged sword effect here, that with improved results has actually come more work. I think that as residents experience code enforcement, getting results and gaining compliance and solving problems, they are, and we want this, more encouraged to call and report things. So it results in an increase in calls and work volume, not only because I think they're confident problems will actually be addressed, but when you resolve big issues, it tends to unmask the smaller ones. The best indication we see of this is very small graffiti incidents that used to go unreported. Now that we're painting over the big ones, some simple marker writing on a pylon at BART will result in a report to the Police Department and to code enforcement. So, you know, there's been an increase in the workload. And recall that, as I said at the beginning, it's come with a 33% reduction in the staff as they came to the Police Department. I think we've offset a lot of that with the improved efficiencies of using CAD RMS, body worn cameras, and just having two very diligent officers. So some examples of their work that I have photographs to share here this evening. The 1100 block of El Camino Real, this was a cleanup of what was basically an abandoned encampment. You can see a tremendous mess there before and a pretty substantial cleanup after. This particular example I show because many of the complaints they deal with occur completely out of the public purview. And many of them pertain to hoarding. And hoarding presents a number of challenges, but is important to acknowledge is at the end of the day, a mental health issue. And so it puts the code enforcement officers in a very difficult position where you want to certainly be providing the individual living there with all the services you possibly can to bring them along. At the same time, you have not just a mess, but in many cases, biohazards and public health issues occurring within these sort of hoarder locations. So I showed the progression of these slides because you can see what they walked into on the left. You can see the update, which is really a process of compromising with the resident as to what things maybe we can start to get rid of. Our main focus early on is going to be ingress and egress and making sure that fire and medics and cops could get in here to help you if they need to. And then the final result still does not probably look like most of our homes, but is a vast improvement in getting the resident the mental health help they need to start cleaning up and fixing the problem. This is another example on the 200 block of San Marco Avenue. We run into these quite frequently. The initial complaint was for junk and trash and debris, but it actually turned out to be a very serious substandard housing issue, where a shed in the back is being rented out to people as a residence, multiple bedrooms, even closets within the residence being rented out individually to people as a place to live. And the code enforcement officer is very, very sensitive to the fact that sure, we could go in and red-tag residences right away and start sending people on their merry way, but that creates an even worse homelessness problem. And so it's a very involved process of moving swiftly but slowly and smoothly to find people appropriate housing resources and then to move forward with cleanup and ensuring that the condition does not recur. And then we have complex cases like the one pictured here up on Cottonwood Drive. This particular residence, there are complaints dating back to 2018, five-plus years. It's been an active case since 2021. Months of research, outreach, education. We've been coordinating with the Building Department and the SPCA. We have even authored two inspection warrants, which prior to the movement to the Police Department had to be done by the City Attorney's Office. We now have code enforcement officers capable of authoring those warrants on their own, so we can get them much more quickly when they're needed. We have issued multiple, multiple citations and the owner has no desire to comply whatsoever. And so this is one of those protracted tough cases that will need to result in continuous sort of progressive discipline, issuing citations, pursuing liens, and figuring out what we have to do to attempt to get this resident in compliance. But there are difficult cases like those that unfortunately we do not resolve. And then another example on the 1,000 block of Montgomery Avenue, again, this is a teardown, but that ended up being the only feasible solution in terms of working with the property owners. Of course, we certainly hope that this will result in a new build and something far more attractive than an empty lot. But given the nuisances and the public health issues that were being created by this residence, we still see it as a vast improvement. So that concludes my presentation and the update on the activities of the code enforcement officers at the Police Department. I am certainly happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief, for the presentation and the information. I know this is something that a council had wanted to see, so we appreciate it being brought back to us. I also want to take the opportunity that I met earlier and thank Elizabeth and Robert, the code enforcement persons that you spoke of. They're sitting in the back, but out in the front, doing the work. With that, is there any questions or comments from colleagues? Vice Mayor.
Just a quick comment. As usual, I had, I had questions percolating and then as the presentation went on, you answered every one of them. So, you know, that, that seems to happen a lot with these, these presentations and that's great. You know, obviously, this has been at the forefront of a lot of our minds over the past several years. The amount of progress that is, that you're, it's being demonstrated by the team is enormous, can't be, can't be understated. Just very, very, very pleased with the, the progress of code enforcement since the move into PD. And I applaud everybody on the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation and also the, all the pictures. I do understand that just having two code enforcement officers with the amount of work definitely can be overwhelming. I do have a few questions. The process, one particular is the picture on Cottonwood beside Cottonwood. So what timeline do we give to the homeowners, contractors and/or whoever's managing the project? For example, when we issue a notice of violation, or do we, do we issue a notice of violation, violation once we, you know, encounter this complaint from the residents or from the contractor or other, other neighboring or neighbors? So do, do we give them, and also how many, the violation, would that be like a double? Because a few years back, we only charged them like, I believe, twice the, you know, the permit and also certain amount, like $100 or something. But what is the timeline? We give them 10 days? We give them 30 days? Because you said that we have been dealing with this for the last five years. So where do we end that process?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I think in And I think in this particular case, I would have to say that the amount of time that the resident is given is going to vary depending upon the nature of the violation and the reasonable time it would take to correct it. This particular residence, you're talking about dozens of violations from various different city departments and various different facets of what's going on at the residence. And so initially, if we're, if the resident is indicating that they want to work with code enforcement and buildings and the various entities, I think we're fairly easy on timing as long as we're making progress. Then what happens in a case like this is that if the, if the resident or responsible party essentially ghosts us and has no interest in complying, then we go straight to the letter of the law, and we provide the minimum amount of notice required before we begin issuing citations. So the notice of correction would start that process, and then once it's, that timeline is not met, whatever it may be for that particular violation, the code enforcement officers will go out and begin issuing citations. And they will issue repeat citations. The real question and one of the areas where I think we need improvement is what happens from there and on what timeline? Again, remembering that I don't think there's any enforcement mechanism in this particular instance that's going to suddenly cause the resident to reverse course and fix all the problems. But there's a point at which they're indicating they clearly don't care about getting repeated citations. And so I think we need to do a better job of using mechanisms like collections to actually create a pain behind the fact that there are these accumulating citation amounts that are going unpaid, and then to pursue the liens on the property. Liens on the property are somewhat laborious, and it requires code enforcement to work very closely with the city attorney's office and to get a courtroom, which can be challenging nowadays. And at the end of the day, it doesn't necessarily affect the existing resident until they plan to sell the house. And so that's why I was careful to say at the beginning that all these enforcement mechanisms are tools to attempt to figure out what is sort of the breaking point where we will gain compliance, where you will agree that we need to do something about this problem. And in this particular case, it's risen to the level of two inspection warrants. An inspection warrant is not unlike having the police come serve a search warrant at your house. I mean, they have a document allowing them forced, uncontrolled entry into an inspection of the residence and documenting violations, taking pictures. It really kind of slams the door on the case, and still, we're gaining no traction or compliance from this resident. So I would suspect that in the near future, we will have to move forward with those progressive sort of efforts to push this a bit further.
What percent of the nuisance complaint between the two code enforcement officers are working on against the, or from the substandard code compliance complaint? Between the two of them, I know it's a lot, but it seemed like we do receive a lot of nuisances like what you mentioned earlier, the, the vehicle, sorry, between the collections of the garbages and also the parking. I know it's not parking, sorry.
I think you mean the inoperable vehicles.
Inoperable vehicle, yes, thank you. So are, are the vehicle owner being cited on that as well? How do we handle that? Because I don't see any, it would be nice, like you said, already mentioned, that code enforcement division can do a better job when it comes to like the process. But within the two years since the code enforcement have been transferred to PD, have the department or the PD develop a new process when it comes to dealing the nuisances and inoperable, substandard housing? How are we working with the, the building inspectors and CDD? Because between the two of them, it may be too overwhelming. So we need to have the help of the building inspectors when it comes to, to identifying what, what code violations are within that particular complaint.
Yeah, I think, I think I understand the question that you're asking, and the, the answer is that the substandard housing and those complaints that require the expertise of a building inspector or permitting or any of these folks that work in other departments outside of CED, we're using a model that is similar to what we see with police departments and district attorney's offices. So essentially, we are the enforcement arm, but we are not the subject matter experts. And so those divisions and the experts there will uncover the substandard housing, as an example, conduct their examination, confirm that it is a violation of what code. They then author a report, because they're the expert, and forward it to the code enforcement officers requesting enforcement. So similar to how a police officer writes a report for criminal charges and sends it to a district attorney and requests that they file charges, right? The police department never files charges, the DA does. In this case, they will do the enforcement, but the testimony, if you will, via the report comes from those other departments. I think that is proving to be a very effective model, although I have to acknowledge there are bumps in the road to that learning process. Personally, I see a very high level of engagement from those other departments, and I think they're working quite well together with code enforcement officers. But it's a new thing, and so they're having to kind of feel out exactly what that looks like and how it works. And in some cases, it's making more work for these other departments, right? It's no longer just a phone call to a code enforcement officer to say, this address has substandard housing, go issue a citation. Now it's, well, I need to see a report. Send me a report that leverages your expertise and we'll go conduct the enforcement. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, I do have a follow-up question, if you don't mind, sorry. So between, between the work percentage of nuisances and substandard, the, the two code enforcement officers are concentrating on the nuisances and not so much of the substandard. Do you think that since the two years back, when the code enforcement division were transferred to PD, having a new model, having not a set process, do you think that the code enforcement is better and can continue in the PD to be able to manage the, the substandard? Because before they were transferred, they were actually working side by side and very closely with the building inspector, permit technicians, and also the, the CDD director and also the, the building official. So having them move to, to the PD, not having the, the complete process to begin with, do you think that the code enforcement can, can handle both the substandard and we do get the, the recovery, cost recovery more on, on recognizing the substandard and having this code violation be put through the permitting process? And we can't just continue to cite them and enforce the, you know, what's code and whatnot, but that we do have to push through on the permitting process. If they were cited, then basically they would have to apply for permit. Having, having the two divisions not working side by side together very closely, then it would be, the, the process will be longer, basically, for, for the permitting process to be completed.
I think there's a lot to unpack there. Let me try to answer it a couple of different ways. First, if I led you to believe that they're prioritizing, say, quality of life issues over life safety issues, that's not accurate. Their priority in terms of the caseload they're directly responsible for is more heavily in the quality of life issues. But they triage every day, and anything that comes over from another department that is life safety in nature is going to immediately jump to the top of the list and take priority. I would agree with you that on paper, it would seem that the closer we put these two entities geographically in an office, that they may work more effectively together. I would argue that the data says exactly the opposite of that. The prior code enforcement structure resulted in a massive backlog of unresolved cases and a huge amount of frustration from this community. The current structure has resulted in a virtual eradication of that backlog, a much higher level of satisfaction and compliance within the community. So I think that while we will always need to continue to improve, it's not that there was no process. There was a very clear process right from the start of this migration that was built in a collaboration between community economic development and the police department, but it has morphed many, many times and will continue to morph many, many times in order to try and perfect it. But I do think that we can leverage technology and communication mediums and process to make up for what we might have lost by having the two entities in offices right next to one another. And again, the priority is compliance. So even when they're issuing citations, the clear message is that we would prefer for you to get the required permit. We would prefer for you to engage in the process, and as soon as they indicate they're doing that, we back off the citations. The citations have very, very little to do with gaining compliance. It just sometimes might get attention of the right person, but from there, we still have to work towards compliance.
Thank you. I do want to recognize, though, that when, when the C, the code enforcement division were transferred to the PD, I don't hear a lot of complaints about nuisances. So I think they're doing a great job when it comes to implementing and, and basically taking care of the complaints and, and, like you said, enforcement of the nuisances. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Medina.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Thank you to our officers for their work. I can tell you, I did that work for about a year and a half, and at some times, it's the worst work possible. The person who's contacting you is upset already. Then you go knock on the door of the person allegedly that has the complaint, and then they get upset, and then you give somebody a notice. So it's just this back and forth. So I want to acknowledge that experience, and I find it amazing that you've got it down to 100 cases and 57 of those are inoperables. I mean, that's amazing. I remember when I was here, it was like 400 cases, and I think we got it down to 200. And the biggest problem that we had at that time was you issue, you issue a notice, you issue a citation, strike one. You issue a citation, strike two. Citation, strike three. What more can you do? Right? Then it goes to city attorney's office, and you might have seen in some of those older files, referred to city attorney, right? So I want to acknowledge that and thank you for that. But I'm also asking, what other, what other tools? Because the people that know the best are the people that are sitting right over there of how it works and how you dangle that carrot, like, I don't want to come back, and if I do come back, I'll have to issue a citation, but make some progress, work with me. The objective is to get compliance. So what tools would increase compliance in code enforcement? When there's repetitive nuisances that you don't maybe give them a 10-day notice to correct, that it's like the weeds that are at that vacant property, you know, they have, they wait until you give them the notice again, and then they clean it up. But I would offer of having some kind of vacant property registration, and I know we did that when it was property that were houses were being abandoned because people couldn't afford them. But what, what I'm seeing down El Camino and San Bruno Avenue with the weeds, it's basically a property owner that's not in San Bruno and that lets that happen. So besides that, what other tools would, would you need to do your job more effectively?
I'm speaking because I don't want to put them on the spot, but you're right. They're the best source of that answer. I will share a couple they've given me and then ask if Robert would like to share some additional thoughts. I think that that mechanism that occurs post-sighting, I mean, Councilmember, you described the scenario perfectly. You issue these two, three, five, 10 citations, and it appears to be getting no traction. We don't have kind of a clear set process for what we do at that point, and I do know there are options. And I mentioned a couple of them earlier, whether it be using collections in order to, you know, citations are just pieces of paper if you don't pay them. And if they don't get sent to collections, there's really no pain to not paying them. But if they do get sent to collections, it can affect credit, it can affect our ability to do other things, and maybe that could be a mechanism to force some additional compliance. And then the next step from there, in many of these cases, are property liens. And I think that the city has been, probably for good reasons, somewhat reluctant to approach those, except in the most extreme cases, not only because they're laborious, but they're very punitive. And many times, in a, you know, seller's market like exists in our housing situation here, the person who ends up getting penalized is the person who buys the house, who isn't the person who engaged in the violation. I think we talked about one of those this evening.
I know you have ideas. Good evening. Robert Harrison. So you're obviously very familiar with the concepts, and I was just explaining this weekend to someone that my job is constantly getting yelled at. I get yelled at on the phone, taking the complaint. I go out, I get yelled at from the person I'm trying to get to change something, and then I'm constantly getting yelled at from all ends. That being said, there are cities that have vacant property registration plans or certain levels of penalties for allowing a property or, some of it comes down to the legal side of how do you define what's vacant? How do you show evidence of it? There are some other legal remedies as well. I mean, there's abatements that you can go through, which are expensive on the city end. In theory, there's cost recovery mechanisms. I've been told by more than one attorney that if your city's going to take on an abatement, don't count on getting that money back, because it doesn't quite always work that way. There's a concept called receivership, but it's a very, very, very big step. You're essentially asking a judge to take a property away from a property owner to then fix the property by taking the money out of the equity. All of that being said, the real answer that I would give for what can we do to motivate someone to take an action is a, a lot of it comes down to that particular individual. And we put a lot of effort into trying to talk to them upfront, educate about what the issue is, find out what their side of it is, what their view is, what their issue is in terms of, and when we're talking to the person that just has their brother's trash piled up out front, and they're looking for an excuse to get rid of it anyway. There are plenty of opportunities where I go out there and someone says, thank you. I've been telling my family member forever that we have to clean this up. Can you give me your card and show me where it says that we can't do this, and I will happily get this fixed before the end of the week? Happens regularly. So it, it's very specific to the case and the property owner. I think we do have tools at our disposal, but it does become diff-
I think maybe the last answer he didn't give, of course, is the one we always give, which is more people. Certainly, a third code enforcement officer would be great. Not, not easy to afford the expense of that, but I'm sure that would help them to manage the caseload.
Okay, well, once again, thank you. And Councilmember Medina, as he said, did the job for a year and a half. And I know, and you alluded to, shall we say, I call it, not yelling, but passion, that you receive. It's one of my, to see your achievement and to see these percents and to see making a difference in this community. I hope when those times come, that there's also that other thought, pause, take a breath and say, you know, I am making a difference. This city is better because of the work I do. So thank you to both. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item six, which is consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be a single public comment period. Councilmember Salazar.
To the chair, thank you. I would like to pull item, I'm not seeing it now. And/or question.
Seeing and hearing none, then we'll-
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I had somebody blocking me here.
Okay, that's for questions or comments. Okay. Anything else? All right, what I'm going to do is take J first, and then we will take, we can, I'm sorry. Thank you. So we'll go to, to executed contract, construction in the amount of 293,000 to be completed at Diamond III repairs at City Park. Councilmember-
Pulling this item. But I think it's really, really important. It's a, it's two things. It's one, it shows how expensive things are. And the numbers, when I first looked at it, but I was like, oh, they're going to do a lot of work at the, at Diamond III. You would think, okay, maybe $100,000. That's what I was thinking. But that amount of work is two, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me.
293,000.
293,000 with a 20% contingency. So I submitted a number of questions, and they were answered, but I went out there twice today, and I actually was amazed about how, how really big those trees are. Hit the, the light standard, the light pole there, it hit the third base bench and the, the backstop. So my concern was, is this, is this fix the first of many fixes there? Because for many years of coaching baseball here in San Bruno, I know how beloved it is, and I'm, I'm- Bruno, I know how beloved it is, and I'm, I have a big spot in my heart for that. Our fields have needed repairs over the years, and it's something that every year, things start to slow significant done. And so the clarification that I asked the staff is making sure that the replacement of the fence, which my understanding now is the fabric, the actual fencing, is going to be replaced all along the first baseline and the third baseline. And then, the amazing things about those eucalyptus trees on that curve is that I think they served as a barrier for a car that were to come off, because there's a pretty steep embankment, embankment right there. And so now that there's no trees to stop a car from barreling over, what's going to, what's going to stop it? And guess what? It's right there at the third base dugout. Personal opinion is that if three eucalyptus, eucalyptus trees have already fallen down on that slope, and there's three more, it's only a matter of time. And it was my choice. I think we should be looking at cutting those trees down. I love trees, but the bad trees that cause problems, we should plant other types of trees in our city. So I wanted to, to let staff be aware of that. I want the public tournament for the Fourth of July is coming. And the kids so far have not been able to play on that field, and to be able to have the tournament, they actually need the fields, with the quantity of games that are going on. So, and I have to say this, I understand emergencies are emergencies and getting pricing, but I always get a tingling down my spine when there's only one bid on a contract. And so I know it was an emergency, but there's more than one fencing contractor out there. And these, these, these trees fell down in March, I believe. So those are, those are my comments. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Councilmember Salazar, then I will.
All right. I wanted to direct a question to staff based on the concerns that Councilmember Medina raised, where there could be potential safety issues from the remaining trees and from cars on the roadway. And so if we are considering-
Let me, let me confer with our Public Works Director and our Transportation people to find out if there indeed is an issue. I, I am unaware of an issue being, existing there for the moment, but I don't want to say that absolutely at this point. But, but the field's unopened anyway at this point, so we could, we could certainly start the repairs and whatnot, should the council approve to do so tonight. And in the meantime, those need to be installed or not. I do believe that there was a, an answer to the question with regards to the traffic issues on Crystal Springs. And if, if the council will allow us, we can, we can certainly get back to you on that topic.
Do you know if, I, I think, I remember the questions or not, so. And, and just, things done quickly, I understand that, you know, there's a sense of urgency, but I, I would just ask staff to definitely be prudent when, when doing that, because there is no, I, it's the only way we know that we're getting the best possible price is if we get multiple quotes. And so I would just ask also that we be very prudent before we take that route. So, thank you.
My only comment is, obviously, it's finding an emergency, which allows it to go forward in a quicker pace, that probably saves a month to two months of going through the normal bid process. It did happen during our storm season, so it could be constituted under the emergency, which provides that opportunity for cities for this and other. So this, this, this council, or prior council, also approved on Crystal Springs Road for $201,000 for 30 trees to be removed, eucalyptus. I don't know if that has been completed. And some of those that I believe, to what I was told, that had fallen, were going to be removed. So Mother Nature sped that up. The, so, you know, I, I hear a question of holding off. Is that what I'm hearing? To pull this until we have questions on the safety element, and continue the field to be closed?
I, I didn't say that. I think the path forward was, and in the answer to my submitted written question, was that the traffic engineer would look at that embankment, just to analyze if what was necessary there. I think we can proceed with, the tournament's not until July, Fourth of July weekend, but so that's not what I was making a motion for. I was just wanted to air my, my concerns, and staff answered, and is addressing them, so.
Yeah. And, and I just want to kind of make it clear, the emergency isn't stated because of the Fourth of July tournament. It's stated because of the weather and the element, and that's what invokes the emergency. So I don't want the impression to be given that the city invoked the emergency process for that reason. Not saying it's not an important event that happens, Dale Wilson Memorial Tournament, but just so it's clear. All right. If there's nothing else on that topic, we have all items under consent.
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items under consent, with the exception of item E.
Thank you. Second. Motion, Hamilton, seconded, Salazar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? I hear unanimous on all items. Okay. And I will be asking about item E, if there's any public comment, and City Clerk will remind me, please. Item E, consider adoption of a resolution approving Chief Financial Officer job title slash job classification, propose an annual salary of $187,365 to $234,264. Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So I had a number of, of concerns around this action when we spoke about it previously. And the reason I'm, I'm pulling it tonight is that I felt that some of the issues that I had, some of the issues that I believe that were raised, are not adequately addressed in, in the staff's presentation, the job description that's enclosed, I believe, I've seen, including a, a job posting that's still available for the director's position before. And, and because of that, and, and I, the city managed facts that would be included in the final job description, but not included in this one. And for that matter, I felt that it might be prudent to hold off on taking the action until that was completed. I know that there's an interest in moving the recruitment process forward, so I do acknowledge that. But I feel that what was presented to us was not-
As I shared with Councilmember Salazar, one of the, the things we were going to do is bring back the completed classification for the new CFO, once the council adopted the, the CFO title and the, and the new salary. I will, I will urge the council to not delay this, if possible, simply because the sooner we can get the recruitment going, the sooner we can get some talented people to join our staff to help us modernize our financial, finance department. And waiting a couple more weeks, because our next meeting really isn't till the 13th, so it'll actually be three more weeks. And my hope is that we can move forward, and in the meantime, bring back the job specification that would, would better outline some of the higher needs than what the Finance Director position currently reads as. Any other questions or comments from colleagues this time? Let's see if there's any members of the public, please. Okay, then we'll bring it back to council for any action in regards to item E.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember?
I just wanted to ask, Councilman Salazar, is, is that response satisfactory? Because I, I don't, don't know exactly what part that you're concerned with. So, without having to go all the way through it, but if, just wanted to see how we can move forward.
No, I understand. And I understand the, the urgency, but I, I'm still not comfortable in approving something that's, in, in my mind, somewhat incomplete at this point, because we are approving the position, and without really understanding what it entails and how it differs from the existing position, I'm hesitant to, to approve it.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Oh, I guess, I'm sorry, I asked that. Is there any other, is there action from council? Hearing none, does it die?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve item 6E.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'm on a second.
Okay. Motion, and seconded, Hamilton, Marty Medina, to approve item E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
So the item passes 3-2. Dissension votes by Alvarez and Salazar. Okay. Now we will move on to conduct of business. Yes, now we will turn it over to the interim Finance Director, please.
Thank you, and, and good evening, Mayor Medina, and, and members of the council. I just very briefly wanted to say that this item is coming before the council, a little later in the year than it normally does. As the council is aware, when, when I arrived here in August, the Finance Department had a number of positions in the accounting area that were under recruitment, and we had not started the, the year-end process yet at that time. And so it was a, one of the more challenging experiences that I've ever been through as an audit. And, and, and I wanted to specifically express thanks to Samo Michelle, who was the Engagement Manager for the audit firm Badawi and Associates, and also to Ahmed Badawi. I'd like to call him up, and I know he has a presentation tonight. They expressed more than their fair share of patience with us, as, as it was a challenging process. And, and we were very pleased that they were so generous in, in working with us, and, and, and helping us get through this audit process. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ahmed Badawi.
Ahmed, please. Thank you for your patience, and welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. So today, I'm going to present to you the results of the fiscal year 2022 audit. And the agenda I'm going to cover, engagement team was, what were our deliverables and the scope of our audit, areas we emphasized on during our audit process, type of audit opinion we issued, and summarize for you some of the numbers in the financial statements, provide you some of the required communication as your independent audit firm, and then see if you have any questions for me. Of course, feel free to interrupt me if you do have questions at any time. As for our engagement team, this was the composition of our engagement team. I was the engagement partner. We always have a quality control reviewer. This person is in the background. Their role is to review our work, make sure that we adhere to professional standards, and also provide a second set of eyes viewing the financial statements. As Bobby mentioned, we had Samo Michelle as the Engagement Manager, and we had three professional staff assigned to the, the audit engagement. In terms of our deliverables and the scope of our audits, we were mainly engaged to provide an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. The city is subject to government auditing standards, so that requires us to issue an opinion on our consideration of the city's internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. The city was a recipient of federal funds, and have expended sufficient federal funds to trigger a compliance audit, we, on those federal grants. We refer to that as a single audit. We also issued a communication to the governing body, so that's usually a letter just describing the scope of the audit, any difficulties we encountered, and so on. We also performed two examination engagements on the Measure A and Measure W. Those are mostly focusing on compliance. Sorry, there's a little bit of delay in the slide. As far as areas of primary audit emphasis, first area was management override of control. This is by default a risk in almost every audit we do. Management are the one normally responsible for designing and overseeing control, and they are always in a position to be able to override them. So we design our audit procedure to mitigate that risk. We test journal entries prepared by management. We review estimates prepared by management, to make sure that they're clear by us. We look at accounting standards, and make sure that they're consistently applied, in a, in a variety of other procedures. High turnover risk, so that was obviously a risk that existed during fiscal year we audited. When we hired, there were people that when we started the audit, they were no longer there, so we had to work with others, and then in forms. So that definitely added challenges and delays to, to the audit. But at the end of the day, we have completed the audit, and were able to get comfortable with the numbers. But it was definitely a risk that we encountered. And that caused us to examine more journal entries, to just do more testing, expand our samples, to make sure that individuals who may not be familiar with the process, had they still done what they were supposed to do. Revenues and receivables is also an area that, of a higher risk, and that, again, is pre-standard in most audits. The assumption is, most people want to show more revenues and less expenses. So then, we assume that the motivation to inflate revenues always there, and we rely heavily on confirmations with third parties. So we communicate with the county, with the state, with granting agencies. We ask them to confirm the amount submitted to the city. We reconcile it to the city's accounting records, and investigate any unusual fluctuation. As far as pension, pension is also an area of higher risk, just due to the dollar amount involved, the complexity of the accounting. So we communicate with the pension plan auditors. We obtain reports from them to confirm the assets invested by the city. We test the information submitted by the city to the pension plan, and then finally, we review also journal entries prepared by management to record the pension activities. As far as our auditors' opinions, so at the end of the day, with all those challenges, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion. That opinion state that we followed the generally accepted auditing standards, and also government auditing standards. An unmodified opinion usually means that we believe that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that all estimates are reasonable, that all disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements, and that all accounting policies have been consistently applied. We also added a paragraph in our audit opinion regarding going concern. The city have two activities, two enterprise activities, that their financial condition is definitely concerning, that doubt about the ability to continue to pay bills. And those are city net and store. The two activities, that the city's financial position in those activities are, are not very favorable. Wanted to just, the numbers in the financial statements. This is a summary of the city's assets over the last three years. It is fairly, was most city. Usually, investment, capital assets. There is a new asset that was added this year for about 3.2 million, and tho, and those were actually a, a restatement. Certain bequests that were donated to the city a while back were never accounted for. So those were captured this year and accounted for. So that's the, the change in that other assets. But other than that, fairly consistent. On this year, the composition of the city's liabilities over the last, and reduction in pension liability, this is something that we've seen across the board. Pension liability for that fiscal year we were auditing was measured as of June 30, 2021, and this was a good year for CalPERS. Obviously, that changed in 2022 for CalPERS. So when you look at your financial statement next year, fiscal year 23, you're probably going to see a big swing in, in the opposite direction with, with pension. But other than that, everything else was fairly consistent as well. Here on this slide is just a breakdown of the city's equity, asset minus liabilities. We always like to, well, we aspire to break down the equity into those three categories. First one, then investment in capital assets. Even though it's the largest category, it's not in expendable form, and it's unlikely to become in expendable form. This is how much the city invested in streets and roads and buildings, and, and things of that nature. So unless you actually sell those assets, this will never become in expendable form. You also have a restricted category, and this represent legal restriction by third parties. So this can be unspent gas tax money, for example, or Measure A, W, or other grants, or, or anything of that nature. And then finally, the unrestricted amount is the amount under the council control, and at this point, it is just $1,000. There were some fluctuations in the prior years, and this is due to some reclassification, and also additional encumbrances- and also additional encumbrances that were recorded. As far as revenues over expenses, for the last three years, revenues have exceeded expenses. I want to say that definitely there were some additional funding like ARPA and things like that that can also show that those revenues are higher, but also increases in the regular revenues that we've seen in many of the cities, just part of the recovery. If we were to look at what we call the net cost of service to tax revenue, so the net cost of service is a cost of running all city departments minus any revenue that those departments bring in on their own. So if, for example, Public Works brings in a grant, that will offset their cost of service. And the idea is to see how much is the city dependent on tax revenue and whether tax revenue are sufficient to cover those net costs of service. So as you can see, that the net costs of service have been going down, and this is a result of, first, reclassification, gas tax was not offset in the past against those net costs of service as it should, so we reclassified that. And also, the ARPA revenue has also reduced the net cost of service. The good news is that tax revenues continue to go up, so that's obviously a good ratio to look at. And then if we were to just focus on the general fund, the general fund, we look at the unrestricted fund balance that have no legal restriction on it and compare it to annual expenditures. The idea is to see if you were to use just fund balance to pay expenses, how long can the city continue to do so? And we determined that the city can probably continue to do so for about seven months, using up your fund balance. So this is a good fund balance. It's not the highest we've ever seen, for sure, but definitely not low that we would be concerned about the city's financial position or the general fund financial position. So seven months is a decent fund balance, so just wanted to highlight that. Just focusing on pension, on this slide here is a summary of the city's contribution to Calpers over the last three years. It's actually been fairly consistent over the last three years, the contributions. On this slide here is the funded status of the city's pension plans, the miscellaneous and safety. The middle row is, are the numbers that we are using currently, and that has a discount rate of 7.15%. Discount rate is one of the most significant assumptions that Calpers use in valuing your pension liability. So we wanted to show you what your liability would look like if that discount rate is either increased or decreased by 1%. It is very unlikely that it will be increased. As a matter of fact, it is now, the discount rate used by Calpers is about 6.9%. So we already know that this has gone down, which will have an impact on the city's pension liability. It will increase the city's pension liability. So that was also Calpers going from 21% profits to probably a 7% loss in 2022. That also will cause some increases to pension liability. Those two factors, pension liability number will look different next year compared to this year. And just the last few slides are going over our responsibility as the audit firm versus the city's responsibility. So we are mainly responsible to provide an opinion on the city's financial statements. We're also responsible for evaluating the city's internal control over financial reporting, evaluating the tone at the top, making sure that management is sending the right message, the rest of the organization about the importance of control, the importance of an audit, correcting the audit findings, so on. We're ensuring, we're responsible for ensuring that the city's financials are clear and transparent, and then finally, we are also responsible for communicating with the city council. Management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements, so our audit does not relieve management from its responsibility for the completeness and accuracy of those financial statements. Our audit provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, because it's on a test basis and has a materiality threshold that it uses. Management is the one responsible for establishing and maintaining internal control over financial reporting, for making all financial records available to us during the audit process, for establishing controls that will prevent and detect fraud, inform us of any known and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, and take corrective action on any audit findings. As far as independence, obviously, we have to remain independent from the city, and that is solely our responsibility as the audit firm. So we evaluate any additional services that we offer the city, like, for example, compiling the financial statements on the city's behalf. We have an independent reviewer that allow us to maintain our independence by having an independent review of those financials. We evaluate relationships with city staff, making sure that no one on our team or in our firm have direct or indirect relations with city staff. And if we do identify that, we remove them from the engagement immediately. As far as timing of the audit, I believe Bobby mentioned earlier that the audit was not performed in a timeframe that was originally communicated, and this was mostly due to the turnover, which led to the city not being able to be ready on time for the audit and the rescheduling and so on. On this slide here, I'm not going to bother you with the detail, but every year there are new accounting standards that the city has to comply with. We have discussions with management about those new standards, what the requirements are, and we discuss with management whether they would be applicable to the city or not. Some of the most significant ones were the Gatsby 87, the new lease accounting, so that probably is the one worth mentioning. Also want to bring to your attention that not every number in the financial statements is an actual number. Some numbers are estimated, and that is acceptable as long as there is a reasonable basis behind those estimates. So just wanted to bring to your attention some of the estimated numbers, like the useful life of capital assets, pension liability, the investment valuation, all of those are estimated numbers. Some of the most sensitive disclosure, the note disclosures in the financials are designed to provide the reader with additional information about the risks that your investments may be exposed to or the assumptions used in calculating your pension liability. So just wanted to highlight to you some of the important disclosure in the financial statements that I think may be helpful to you. I'm pleased to say that we encountered no difficulties during the audits, even though there were delays, but I feel that working with city staff throughout the process, we felt cooperation. We felt that city staff were just trying to do what they can with the resources that they have, and it is, but we didn't really feel that we had difficulties working with the city, but I think the situation was difficult. There were some adjustments in reclassifying entry, and management has posted all those adjustments. So adjustments normally occur after we start the audit. We go over the numbers that the city presented to us, we discover errors, either due to just an oversight or maybe miscalculation or something of that nature. So we would then propose adjustments to correct those numbers, and the city have agreed with those adjustments and recorded them in the financial records. No significant risk or exposure, so normally we have communication with the legal council. We ask them to communicate to us any outstanding litigations, any uncertainties relating to events, and we disclose those or make sure that they are properly accounted for in the financials. We're pleased to report that there were no disagreements with management, so again, we were able to work through things and reached an agreement at the end. And as far as deficiencies identified in internal control, so we had several deficiencies identified. The first one was the city net enterprise fund advanced balances and the net deficit, and same with the stormwater fund operating losses. So there are borrowings from, by city net fund, that there are questions about their ability to repay, and also the fact that they are in a deficit position. And similar to that is the stormwater fund also in a deficit position and operating results are not positive, meaning like expenses are exceeding revenues. So those two funds are a concern to us as far as just their financial viability. And then our other finding or observation is the year-end close and audit preparedness. And I think we kind of brought this, touched on this throughout the presentation, the fact that the turnover has caused the city not to be fully prepared for the audit, the year-end close was not done exactly as we expected, and that had caused some delays in audits. I think other than that, right before we issued our financial statements, we requested representation from management. This is a letter of management letting us know that they have disclosed all known facts, that they have recorded all transactions, that they have reviewed and taken responsibility for the financial statements, and so on. We have not become aware of any instance of fraud or illegal act as we have gone through our audit. On this slide here, just want to bring to your attention that, like I mentioned earlier, every year there are new standards, new accounting standards to be implemented, so this is what's on the horizon by the year of implementation for the city. As we get closer, of course, we will be discussing them with management in more detail. And with that, I want to say thank you very much for inviting me to the meeting, and I'm more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation and information. This time, there are no questions from the council. Let's see if there's any members of the public. Okay, we're going to bring it back to council for any comments. Councilman Medina.
Yes, I definitely appreciate the candor in your presentation and identifying the things that we know. We know that there's an issue with our stormwater funds. We know there's issues with city net. And hopefully with the change of being able to retain people in our finance department that will be able to do things on time. This is the first audit that has been delayed in my eight years, seven, eight years here. So it's understandable, but the good news is that it's a clean audit. So thank you and for staff for following through.
Okay, with nothing else at this time, is there any action from council? I'll hold that pause.
I'm sorry, Tom.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Councilman Salazar.
Before we make that, I just wanted to also express my thanks for all the work. I know this is a huge, huge exercise, not only for the auditor but also for city staff and with the number of openings and Bobby stepping in as an interim. I know this was a tall order, so even though it was a little late, I just want to acknowledge the hard work that went into it and my appreciation. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I will echo that, and also I'd like to make a motion to adopt Item 7A as read by the clerk.
Motion Hamilton, Second Ed Salazar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0, passed unanimously. And again, thank you for being here. Safe travels home.
Thank you very much.
And Bobby was echoed by a couple of members. If you could pass on to the finance team, thank you.
I will.
It's been daunting, challenging, but we got it done, and so thank you. With that, we'll move on to Item B, please. Chief Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Once again, just one moment, please, to get my screen share up. Okay, thank you very much. Once again, I am Ryan Johansson, the Chief of Police, here to present you this evening with a request to renew the military equipment use ordinance. Essentially, the action before you is to receive the annual military equipment use report, review the existing military equipment use ordinance, and hopefully adopt a resolution to renew the existing military equipment use ordinance number 2022-1910. The agenda is that I'll go through a brief background just to refresh our recollection about sort of what this military equipment use policy is all about, what the obligations of our elected body are with respect to it. I'll go through a brief review of the existing military equipment use ordinance. I will provide you with the 2022 Annual Military Equipment Use Report as required by statute, go through some recommendations and alternatives, and then, of course, take any questions that council or the public may have. The background here, just as a reminder, this all pertains to California Assembly Bill 481, which was then codified in a number of government codes, essentially required the governing body in the city to, their approval prior to taking certain actions regarding the funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment as defined by the code. This is accomplished through the adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance. It requires renewal of authorization annually, which is based upon an annual military equipment use report, which is the reason I'm before you this evening. In terms of what led us to this, in March of 2022, council approved the military equipment use policy for the San Bruno Police Department, and on April 26, 2022, council approved the military equipment use ordinance 2022-1910 as codified in Title II, Chapter 2.52 of the San Bruno immunity code. This report is the first delivery of an annual military equipment use report, and it covers the period from April 26, 2022 through April 25, 2023. Just as a reminder as to where this came from, Assembly Bill 481 originated based upon what was referred to as the 1033 program. This is essentially a program that allowed local police departments to acquire surplus equipment from the military through a grant. It is important for me to reiterate what I covered in the first presentation last year, which is that your police department does not obtain, does not possess any equipment that it obtained through the 1033 program. It does not possess or use any equipment obtained from the military period, and nor does it use any equipment that was designed for military use. A rewrite of AB 481 resulted in significant expansion of the definition of military equipment beyond equipment obtained from the military, and identified 16 types of equipment that it considers to be, in quotes, "military equipment" per the code. Your police department possesses four of these types of equipment: drones or unmanned aircraft systems, a command vehicle, patrol rifles that are standard issue, and a 40-millimeter less-lethal launchers. The ordinance that is previously approved and sits before you again tonight for council has a number of different sections and falls under Chapter 2.52. I will briefly go through them just for your edification and to refresh your recollection. In terms of the naming of the ordinance, the first section, we just used verbiage that is completely consistent with that in Assembly Bill 481 and the applicable California Government Codes. The same thing was done for definitions, taken directly from California Government Code Section 7070. The key definitions there are military equipment, which is defined by types, the 16 I previously stated, and a military equipment use policy is defined there, which is previously approved by council, as well as defining what is, needs to be included in the annual military equipment report. The next section, it covers the military equipment use policy requirement. Again, this language is taken directly from the code. It says that the PD must provide a military equipment use policy to council for approval, and again, this was completed in March, on March 1st of 2022. We did include a clause for use in exigent circumstances. My contention when I presented to you originally is that this is critical for public and officer safety. We use a very restrictive definition of exigent circumstances as a law enforcement agency's good faith belief that an emergency involving the danger of or imminent threat of death or serious physical injury to any person is occurring, has occurred, or is about to occur. And this means that there is an exception for the city to utilize, the police department to utilize, equipment that is not presently included in the military equipment use policy under these exigent circumstances. If and when we do so, it requires notification and approval from the city council within 30 days of that decision. I'm sure you can imagine that this is just due to the exigent, excuse me, nature of policing, that we may not be afforded the opportunity to come before our elected body prior to needing to deploy certain types of equipment in extreme circumstances. The best example I can come up with would be armor. We do not possess or use armored vehicles in the city of San Bruno at this point in time, but in the event of active assailants, especially in a school, this is something we would probably utilize from our regional SWAT team, and we would come before you to report that within 30 days, so you're aware of that deployment and usage. And 2.52050 deals with the military equipment report, which is essentially what I'm delivering to you this evening. That basically requires me to come before you as your police chief, explain to you to what degree our use of military equipment in the preceding year was in compliance with the adopted ordinance and policy you've previously seen, and to give you the opportunity to address any discrepancies between the established policy and our actual practices. So at a high level, I think it's very important to tell you that I'm not coming, I'm coming before you tonight, and I am not requesting approval to purchase or acquire any new military equipment. So I'm not asking for any change to the existing military equipment use policy or the existing ordinance at all. California Government Code 7071B requires that we post our military equipment use policy to our public website at least 30 days prior to a public hearing dealing with it. It's important to note- It's important to know that this was accomplished all the way back in January of 2022. It has been up on the website continuously since that time, and I've included the link here in the presentation for where that can be accessed. I've also included some information in this slide for how members of the community can register complaints, concerns, or submit questions about how we use military equipment as it's defined in this code. That can be done by email, by phone, or even by conventional mail. So in terms of the report I'm here to deliver to you this evening, all of that precursor brings a very brief report to you. Because what I have to tell you is that there were no instances in that year in which unapproved military equipment was used, nor were there any instances in which approved military equipment was used in a manner that is not approved by the associated policies during this entire evaluation and reporting period. So basically, we've been consistent with the adopted policies and ordinance of council. I will go through quickly in this report the types of equipment we have and how we did use them this year. The first type is unmanned aircraft systems, or UAS drones. These are basically unpiloted mini helicopters that were able to fly around for police operations. This year, during this reporting period, the uses included search and rescue operations, suspect apprehension, crime scene documentation, tactical operations, scene security, hazard monitoring, identification and mitigation, response to emergency calls, and crisis communications. Were not used for any surveillance, although that is permitted in the policy. The second type are semi-automatic rifles and ammunition. I think it's important to note here that I do not believe that the statute actually requires this to be reported in the military equipment use policy, because it is standard-issue equipment that is given to every active-duty police officer in the police department. But in an abundance of caution and in interest of transparency, this is probably the most military-like equipment we actually possess, and so I've included it from the start in our reporting. We possess 78 such semi-automatic rifles and a variety of different types of ammunition. There were no instances this year in which the patrol rifles were fired at all outside of organized range training classes. So they've only been deployed in anticipation of potential use, but there were no instances in which they were fired in a public setting at all during this year. The next is our mobile command vehicle. I've actually always thought it's a little silly to disclose this to you. All of you are familiar with the mobile command vehicle that we obtained following the active shooter incident at YouTube. This is literally a very large ambulance with fiberglass walls that we can use to drive around. It has a bunch of computers and TV screens in it so that we can manage critical incidents at that supervisory level. It is not armored, it does not carry weapons, but in the code, it's in a little bit of a gray area in terms of disclosure, and so I've always disclosed it. This MCV, as we refer to it, was deployed multiple times this year to support command operations and for planned events and emergency operations. And finally, the 40-millimeter less-lethal launchers and kinetic energy munitions. These are essentially large, less-lethal launchers that can fire rubber projectiles. It is an alternative to the use of lethal force in situations where lethal force may otherwise be needed. They, similar to the rifles, were not fired in any kind of public setting or anywhere outside of controlled range operations during this period. They were deployed numerous times as a potential force option, and only appropriately and in keeping with department policy. So that is a summary of how the military equipment you've previously approved was used during this period. The recommendation of staff is that city council vote to renew the existing military equipment use ordinance under Chapter 2.52 regarding police department acquisition and use of military equipment in accordance with state law. That is what is required, is for our elected body to take a voting action to either renew the ordinance for another year, or to request some sort of changes to the ordinance. As an alternative, you could certainly request additional information and/or modifications to the ordinance before renewing it. And that concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief, for the report and the update. Any questions on the presentation from colleagues? Seeing, hearing, none? Are there any members of the public wish to speak? Okay. I was just going to say that, as an example, because I know you gave it as far as using the military within the 30 days, an example would be in the YouTube Active Shooter, when we had an apparatus that I know I got questioned on, like, why would we bring that in? Well, due to the situation, and that would be now, not then, reported within the 30 days upon its usage to the council. And then, we have, we have discussed this and approved this a year ago, and this is an ongoing annual occurrence. There is, as was indicated, no new items and no appropriations for any purchase of said new items. And so therefore, it is the annual required report. Unless there are comments, is there any action from council? This is a resolution renewing the military equipment use ordinance, number 22, 2022-1910. Any action by colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Move to approve.
Motion, Salazar, second Alvarez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, passed unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item number eight, council committee report outs. First, we'll start with council member Marty Medina, then we'll go to the Vice Mayor, Hamilton, and a guy named Rico Medina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report out. I serve on Peninsula Clean Energy, PCE, as San Bruno's representative on the board of directors. PCE is a community-controlled, not-for-profit, joint powers agency formed as a community choice aggregation, CCA, there's a lot of acronyms here. This program by San Mateo County and all 20 of its cities and towns in 2016. PCE provides clean energy at lower prices, at least 5% than PG&E, and invest proceeds back into the community. This early Thursday morning, I flew down to the Cal CCA conference, returned early Friday evening. There were a lot of workshops, briefly in summary. Those that I attended were how CCAs put community in community choice, how to leverage tax-exempt, taxes-exempt prepayment strategies, how to utilize the upcoming offshore wind projects that are in planning, exploring the promise of renewable hydrogen. And, and the closer was the reliability, decarbonization, and affordability of, of clean energy. What, what's that all about? So it was a very worthwhile conference. So I was reporting out on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I just wanted to do a very brief report out. I, I, I am the city's representative at the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, or BOSCA, and I serve on the board of directors. And we had our regular meeting on May 18th. At that meeting, we unanimously approved BOSCA's 2023-2024 work plan. We approved 25 consulting contracts for legal, engineering, financing, finance, strategy, and water conservation services. BOSCA actually has quite a very lean staff and utilizes consultants for the bulk of the efforts. So we renewed all of those contracts, as happens every year. We approved a consulting contract to support the scoping of BOSCA's long-term reliable water supply strategy through 2045. This is an effort that was last done in 2015 and needs to be renewed as conditions change as we move into the future. And then, lastly, we approved a $50,000 increase in funding for legal counsel to fund unanticipated and unbudgeted needs, including dealing with the closure of Silicon Valley Bank, where BOSCA had all of its money. So that was handled, that was handled just fine, but we had to spend extra money on lawyers to get through that. And that's my report out.
Thank you. For myself, on May 10th, we had a ALS, which is the Advanced Life System Management Meeting, which is, was one of my firsts as the chair now. And we were receiving on the staffing needs that continue when it comes to ambulance response, medical personnel. And also, we review the response times for emergencies that are first done by our fire and then followed up by our ambulances to meet the required 6.59 as far as minutes, seconds into each situation. But we are fortunate that in our jurisdiction, we have mutual aid, but it also, we have, we meet those guidelines in the fire department with their personnel, help us achieve that in all communities. On May 17th, I also, we had our regular board meeting, and we held it in Burlingame, which, as chair, I figured everybody would want to see the facility, get a tour of it. And we had that, and we went ahead and approved the budget and the allocations that will be required of each jurisdiction in order to be into the JPA. On May 18th, the Finance Committee for the Emergency Services Council met in Redwood City at their new facility, Measure K dollars built for the emergency services area, and DEM. And they will be looking for a new director to replace the interim director, Don Matei, who is departing in September. And Supervisor Slogan, who is the chair, has asked me if I would help review interested personnel for that position for the county. And that is my report under council committee report outs. As far as moving on to item nine, comments from council members. Mr. Medina, Mr. Hamilton, anything?
I'll go first, just as I made it to the button first. Just wanted to announce the monthly, the monthly American Legion Pancake Breakfast will be held this coming Saturday at the American Legion Hall on San Mateo Avenue. Starts at 9:00 AM. If you want to volunteer to help us cook a ton of food, you can come down earlier, but we certainly hope you'll come down at, after 9:00 to enjoy well-cooked breakfast and engage with your community. Thank you.
You can do that, Marty. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. Tomorrow, at Bel Air Elementary, 453rd Avenue, a bunch of your community volunteers are going to get together and distribute groceries to 250 families. It starts at 2:00, it goes until 4:00. However, just wanted to note that we have been running out of food. We are in need of volunteers, so if you could come out, it's a lot of fun, you get a good workout, you get to see, see people who really appreciate receiving groceries. So if you can make it at 1:45, show up. We'll take it easy on you and make sure that you're well taken care of. And the other thing I had to announce, and with the mayor's permission there, because it involves cappuccino. First of all, congratulations to the varsity girls softball team for making the playoffs. Unfortunately, they didn't, they're not moving on. However, today, the cappuccino varsity baseball team won 12 to 5, so they are moving forward on CCS. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me share that. I just looked it up.
No, I appreciate that, and I know somebody's memorial weekends got changed because of that. So, not mine, but somebody's coaching. So, but thank you, council member. For myself, on May 11th, waiters. So I think we were all doing well until they started asking questions. And, and then they had a secret box of questions because we had more time. But it was interesting, and I think we, we enjoyed the, the time with them. And you got to love it, because even one young lady who lives near Grundy Park, and then the vice mayor gave that question to me, was, or was at Cressmore Field.
I gave you Cressmore.
And then about the slide, and when was it going to be repaired? And so I went back the next day to the classroom. The teacher let me back in to say I have reported it, as I promised, and the part is on order. And so, of course, I asked kind of staff, like, what does soon mean? And she just told me that, don't worry, I go there every day. I'll let you know. So I appreciated that. May 12th, we had an interesting interview with Gina, who is a senior in college, lives in Daly City, but has family in San Bruno. And she was doing her college, senior college paper on the PG&E pipeline explosion on September 9th. And so she'd asked if I would be interviewed. And what I did is I met up at Glenview Earl Park, and I asked several of the residents if they would come out so that she could interview them about where we were, what happened, what they experienced, how they got services, and where they are today. And so this will be a paper that she's submitting, which I don't know the professor's name, but happy to reach out to them. But it was a great opportunity, and her enthusiasm was just beautiful, and, and the residents appreciated sharing that and continuing to remember. And then also, I contacted Caltrain. If you remember, we used to have lighting underneath the overpass at the train station. And for some reason, I noticed, for whatever reason, was out. So I've contacted Caltrain. They are working on that to bring back the lights. It is under their contract, I found out. And so they are working on that to bring those lights back. And then finally, a big congratulations to the classes of 2023, to all their good faith fortune, and best wishes on their new embarkment as they embark upon this new chapter in their life. On behalf of the council, I'm sure I'm safe to say, we don't need to vote on this, but we all wish you the very best to you and your families. Congratulations. And with that, we are going to move to adjournment, and I do want to adjourn it in the memory of Ruth Palace. Ruth Palace, as you may know, did pass away on Tuesday morning. She was 94, was going to be 95 next month. She was married to Chris Palace for 59 years, who served on this city council for 24 years and also on the school board for eight. Ruth was raised on a farm in Wyoming. Ruth graduated from Riverton High School in May of 1946. She enrolled in the Western Union School in Santa Cruz, California, and worked for Western Union at Camp Stoneman Army Base in California, and later in Casper, Wyoming. Married to Chris for 59 years. They lived happily in San Bruno, California, where they raised their children and were active members of the community. She was a people person, very active in many organizations, including Holy Trinity Church, PTA, San Bruno Senior Center, and the American Legion Auxiliary. Ruth had a passion for life, laughter, games, and a sense of adventure. She always had a quick smile, a twinkle in her eye, and a love to create beautiful things. Sewing, knitting, painting, and gardening. Ruth touched the lives of all that she met and was an inspiration to her children and grandchildren. She was steadfast in her faith, and that was the compass of her life. She had a strong constitution and boundless fond memories and stories of her life. She will be remembered for her selfishness and desire to help others above herself. Through to the end, Ruth lived independently, was surrounded by family and friends, and was loved by all that knew her. And this is a person that even in her 90s supported Measure X for the school system in the city. There's a letter that she wrote. She received the San Bruno Community Recognition Award. She served on the senior advisory board. She served on the senior endowment board with me.